Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the Education Administration Building, as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record, Jersey Journal and District Website.
Please. Call the rule.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino? Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 17, 2023, and August 30, 2023.
A second? Question? Call the rule.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I abstain.
Ms. Howard?
I abstain. I wasn't a board member at the time.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. No case?
All right, everyone. It's our favorite time of the month. We get to highlight very, very special individuals within our district. So in order to avoid some controversy by our administrators, you can rock, paper, scissors for whoever goes first.
Good evening, everyone. Vanda Wargaki Assistant Principal, Secaucus High School. Our December Student of the Month is Senior Edward Rodriguez. Edward exemplifies the qualities that make an outstanding student both in and out of the classroom. His dedication to academic excellence is truly commendable, consistently producing high-quality work and actively participating in class discussions. Beyond his impressive academic achievements, Edward is known for his positive attitude and willingness to help his peers and teachers. As the president of Mu Alpha Theta Mathematics Honor Society and Math Club, Edward recently assisted with the planning of the math club's trip to Seton Hall University to compete in a statewide math competition along with our annual honors induction night. Additionally, Edward is working closely with his robotics team to organize and plan for their upcoming national champion competition. At last month's high school open house, Edward did not hesitate to volunteer to speak to eighth-grade parents about his time at Secaucus High School and the mathematics and science electives that we offer. Most impressively, Edward was recently accepted with a full scholarship to Princeton University, where he will continue his studies in the fall of 2024. Congratulations, Edward. Okay, our staff member of the month. It is my pleasure to acknowledge the extraordinary dedication and selflessness of our calculus teacher, Ms. Z. In addition to her exceptional teaching skills and vast knowledge base, Ms. Z stands out for the immeasurable compassion she showers her students with. She plays an integral role at so many school events, from back-to-school night in September to honors night and high school orientation in November. Ms. Z's classroom is not only a space for academic learning, where students are challenged, forcing their intellectual ability to grow, it is also a sanctuary where her genuine care and mentorship create an environment where students feel valued and supported. Her dedication extends far beyond the confines of textbooks and exams, leaving a mark on the hearts and minds of those fortunate enough to be under her guidance. Ms. Z, it is an honor to work with such a dedicated educator who shapes not only mathematical minds, but also nurtures the potential within each of your students. Congratulations.
Good evening. Dr. Danielle Garzon, Principal of Secaucus Middle School. Tonight, I have the pleasure of honoring not only our December Student of the Month, but our November Student of the Month. Penelope Campo, known around the middle school as Penny, exemplifies the qualities of a true Patriot of the Month at Secaucus Middle School. As an eighth-grade Patriot Ambassador, she takes pride in her role as a leader and actively contributes to our school's community. Her involvement in prestigious organizations such as Alpha and NJHS reflects her commitment to academic excellence and service. Beyond the classroom, Penny showcases her versatility as a talented ice hockey player in the town's recreation program, demonstrating both athleticism and sportsmanship. Her contributions extend to the girls' middle school volleyball team, where she played a pivotal role, further solidifying her as a well-rounded and dedicated member of our school community. Congratulations to Penelope Campo for earning a well-deserved title of the November Patriot of the Month. Congratulations. If there were ever a student who embodied the positivity of Secaucus Middle School, it would be Marina Valente, our recipient of the Secaucus Middle School December Patriot of the Month. From the moment she walks in our doors, Marina has a constant smile on her face that shines from ear to ear. She greets everyone with a friendly hello and exhibits a happy demeanor as she walks through the hallways. She has consistently demonstrated an exceptional level of politeness, treating both peers and faculty with respect and courtesy. Her kindness extends beyond the classroom, creating a positive and inclusive environment that makes our school a better place for everyone. This recognition reflects Marina's exemplary character and her positive influence on our school community. Her politeness, kindness and intelligence embodies the values that we hold dear here at Secaucus Middle School. In addition to being a model student, Marina is an active member of multiple Secaucus Middle School clubs and extracurriculars, including the Dance Club, Drama Club, Girls Group, Rock Band, Builders Club and the SGO. Please join us in congratulating Marina Valente as our December Patriot of the Month. Congratulations. Unfortunately, our December Staff Member of the Month could not be here with us tonight. Our Secaucus Middle School Staff Member of the Month was William Heaney. He will be here at our January Board meeting, which we will be recognizing him at that time. Thank you and have a great night. Our Student of the Month for December received her nomination for embodying everything we love and celebrate during the holiday season: kindness, goodwill, and the spreading of cheer for the benefit of others. On the day of the Holiday Bazaar at Claridin, Brianna Howard's aunt, who is also a teacher at Claridin, offered the prize she won during the raffle to her niece Brianna. As what I have come to learn is typical of Brianna's compassionate nature, she asked if instead the toy could be donated to the holiday toy drive for a child in need. In hearing from other staff members who either taught or know Brianna, the stories of her humbleness, her helpfulness and her compassion continued. One other story that stood out was learning that Brianna joined the sign language club in the hopes that she could one day learn to better communicate with a classmate. This award tonight is a testament to your outstanding character and the positive impact you have on everyone who has the pleasure of knowing you. Congratulations. The first faces you see and the first voices you hear when you enter a school are so important. While on October 31, 2023, if you entered Claridin School, you entered hearing, "Hi, Barbie," at which point any of over 50 staff member Barbies might have answered back, "Hi, Barbie." I absolutely lived to play Barbies when I was a child, but if I'm honest, back when I was a child, there were certain Barbies I never even thought to play, like, say, Principal Barbie. Principals were boys. Ken could be a principal. I remember chatting with our Staff Member of the Month prior to Halloween, and I asked her which Barbie she was going to be, and she explained to me that she would be in her uniform on Halloween, which, come to think of it, if I hadn't been completely swept away by my first elementary school celebration of this day, was the logical, right and appropriate answer for someone who serves in her capacity. This I should have known. Of course she couldn't dress up as Barbie, because Claridin's Staff Member of the Month is our amazing security guard, Mrs. Natalie Pizza. One of the doll lines that Mattel has come out with in recent years is the "you can be anything Barbie." I absolutely love that I work in a building where our children are greeted every day by a smart, capable, compassionate and fierce female security guard, who they have no doubt both loves and protects, who greets them every day at the door by name and provides them with an amazing role model to look up to. Look at us in 2023, principal and security guard Barbies, not Kens. One of my favorite quotes in the Barbie movie is, "We mothers stand still so our daughters can look back to see how far they have come." Thank you, Natalie, for being a testament to how far we have come. Congratulations.
I am not Barbie or Ken, but I will do my best to follow Chrissy. One note you should follow anytime you ever have to give a speech is don't follow Chrissy Candela. However, the Huber Street School Student of the Month is extremely easy to talk about. Esmeralda Mikey, she does it all. It is my honor to stand here before you and recognize this young lady. Esmeralda stands out among her peers because she is kind, humble, and the respect that she demonstrates toward everyone around her is unmatched. Esmeralda's sweet disposition hides her fierce determination to do well and succeed. She's a diligent student who works hard, not just to get good grades, but to actually learn. Her hard work and dedication are also on display on soccer fields and basketball courts across northern New Jersey. She's a caring friend, a wonderful human being, and a truly kind person, and one of the easiest people to root for, whether it's in school or in sports. It is my pleasure to introduce the Huber Street School December Student of the Month, Esmeralda Mikey. The December Faculty Member of the Month has been nominated not just this month, but in previous months as well. The Millridge School Faculty Staff Member of the Month is Mrs. Amber Catuna. The first time I get to say that name publicly. Amber was just married a little over a month ago, right? Five weeks? Amber's exceptional kindness sets a shining example for her students and her colleagues alike. Her warm smile and gentle demeanor create an environment where our little ones feel safe, valued and encouraged to explore the wonders of learning. Mrs. Catuna is more than just an assistant for Mrs. Leppin. She is her right hand. It often seems as if she can read Mrs. Leppin's mind. They finish each other's sentences. The students of the Millridge School don't just respect Mrs. Catuna, they love her. Amber's dedication to our pre-K students is unparalleled. It is my pleasure to introduce the newly married Faculty Member of the Month, Mrs. Amber Catuna. And related to the Claridin School Staff Member of the Month.
Student representative update?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been well. I only have a few announcements to make tonight from the high school. Last November, we had the SGO Host Spirit Week to take us to Thanksgiving break, which had everyone very excited. Once we Once we returned from the break, the students became excited for the events to come before Christmas break. For our seniors, they've been receiving their college admissions letters, and to go along with that, our guidance department has set up a bell for the seniors to ring and to celebrate their hard work. Today, I got to ring the bell for my admission into Northeastern University. Coming up right before our break is the NHS Annual Ugly Christmas Sweater Day for the donation of $1, and it's held on December 21st. On that night, December 21st, the chorus and band concert for the high school with the senior dinner before that in the PAC lobby will take place and will be served by NHS members. Finally, to close out the year, the SGO's Winter Pep Rally will be next Friday, December 22nd, and our students are already excited to compete against other classes. Thank you and happy holidays.
Joe Lewis, Seacaucus, New Jersey. So it is good practice, or best practice, for Board of Education to put together board goals, and last year, last January, we, as a board, came up with four goals. The first goal was to select and appoint the district's next superintendent following the superintendent's search process. The second one was to ensure that the Seacaucus Board of Education is utilizing best practices and procedures to ensure effectiveness and efficiency. The third goal was to create an in-district orientation for new school board members to support and welcome newly elected members to the Board of Education. The fourth goal was to continue to improve communications, both within the board and externally. So let's take a look. For Goal One, we had major activities and indicators. For each major activity, the indicator would tell us whether or not that major activity was achieved. So for the first major activity, we had to collaborate with the New Jersey School Board Association to ensure the solicitation of feedback from all stakeholders. Okay? We had to hold meetings with board parents, with the board, parents, students, staff, and community members. We did all of that, so that activity was achieved. The second activity, NJSPA reviews applicants and selects candidates for us to interview. The applicants were selected, that was achieved. The third, the board is going to conduct interviews, first, second, and third round. We did all that, that was achieved. The fourth major activity, board selects finalists and begins contract negotiations. We did that, that was achieved. Board hires, publicly approves new superintendent, and introduces superintendent to staff and community. If you haven't noticed, he's right over here. All right? So this is achieved. So our first goal was complete. The second goal, the first major activity was to review best practices for board processes, all right? Agendas, development of monthly, development and monthly meeting protocols, committee structures, how information is shared, Open Public Meeting Acts, ethics, and so on. Board members maintain shared understanding of protocols and procedures, new information used, update Board Orientation Manual. This is in progress. There are some things that we did to further this activity, but we didn't get to actually where we needed to get, and you'll see in December. Two, we're going to engage in professional development opportunities as individual members and a collective board, collectively review each member's certifications and training, and create a plan to fill in gaps. We needed to have more than 50% of the school board members receive training above the bare minimum. We achieved that. The third one was to maintain ongoing correspondence with NJSPA to ensure, to ensure that appropriate policies and procedures are being followed and to assist with resolution of potential violations and fractions with Open Public Meeting Act, ethics, allowable, allowable community, public interactions. The majority of the board attends meetings and engages through, through open discussions, questions, and answers with field service reps. This one, since we didn't complete all of them, we do realize that there is always a need to review and revise our procedures as needed to ensure that all board members receive all information in a timely and efficient fashion. We will continue to work on this. This is a goal that should constantly be looked at. The third goal, we had to develop new board member manual, including providing information on how to review monthly financial reports and policies, as well as emphasize the importance of board role in developing goals and evaluating progress. So our indicator of success was completion of a manual prior to 2023. That was completed. You will see that the following three, we did not meet any of those, any of those goals for those activities. So due to the late adoption and execution of the 2022 goals, immediately followed by three new board members and the extensive superintendent's search, this goal was not a focus as other priorities were identified. As of 2023, that election produced three incumbents, so we won't have any brand-new board members to have go through an orientation. For Goal Four, we had to create a communication plan to address internal communications between board members, chain of command issues, and how best to respond to emails and address concerns from the public. Our indicator of success was board members indicate that they understand processes of communication, board members feel well-informed on relevant issues, all emails from the public are appropriately addressed in a timely manner. This one was in progress. We are constantly looking at ways to communicate better, both internally and externally. We just, at this point, didn't reach that goal. The second one was to review board meeting practices to ensure honest, open communication with the public and review Open Public Meetings Act with board members to ensure community buy-in, public trust, and board member accountability. We had to make necessary and appropriate changes. We achieved that. Three, we need to revise monthly information sharing practices to streamline communications with board members and provide all information in advance of board meetings, and our indicator of success was new practices should make it easier for board members to easily find all information related to specific agenda items, reducing the time spent preparing for meetings. Again, this is in progress. We did make some changes to practices, but, you know, it's tough to turn a battleship, so there's still some things that we do need to, to work on. The Communications Committee is working tirelessly on this area of need. Changes have been made to streamline communications, but like I said, we are still working on that. So to summarize, Goal One was completed. This was a full-month process that ultimately ended with hiring of Dr. Alfonso. With that, there was a ton of meetings that all board members had to be in that were not conflicted, as well as three rounds of interviews, and then ultimately hiring of the candidate. Goal Two, in progress. Communications Committee did take up this issue on how better to share information. Board members have taken Governance One, which covers Ethics and Open Public Meeting Act, and Mr. Fogarty conducted an Ethics presentation during the year. Goal Three, partial completion of this goal. While we still need to work towards completion of this goal, we were sidetracked by the superintendent's search. And Goal Four, while this goal is partially complete, we're always looking for ways to streamline the process of forwarding information to the public and the full board. And that's it. That's all I got. Any questions?
Great job, Joe.
Thank you.
It's a great presentation.
Thank you.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Superintendent's report?
All right, good evening, everyone. As we approach the end of 2023, I'm delighted to share updates on recent activities and upcoming events from Seacaucus School District. Last week, our high school successfully hosted a financial aid night, providing valuable information to our upcoming graduates and families, which is always very much needed. We began our December holiday festivities with a wonderful concert at Huber Street School on Thursday. I'm also thrilled to report that the high school winter play was a resounding success. It drew an amazingly large audience, and a special thanks to Ms. DeLa Cruz for her exceptional commitment and contribution to our students. This week, we continue our holiday celebrations with the middle school concert on Tuesday. Furthermore, Ms. Lot, she led a successful elementary family math night, which a lot of families had great reviews about it. Looking ahead, we have several key events planned. On Monday, we will conduct the Title I information session at 6:30, with more details to be provided soon. Tuesday will feature Claridin's winter concert, and on Wednesday, we will have a multilingual learner parent information session at 6:30 PM, which additional information will also be going out. Our holiday season will culminate with the high school's holiday concert on Thursday evening. I'd like to take a moment to spotlight our sensory center event that was held last Saturday, and a heartfelt thanks to the Roman and Deombre families for organizing this meaningful event for our students and families. It was an amazing experience. Lastly, a large initiative that we've had this year as an administration is to focus on enhancing our educational climate through additional funding. I'm proud to announce that from July 1st to today, we have secured 667,393,000 additional grants. These funds will enable further training for our teachers and additional resources for our students. We're excited for the projects that we have lined up for 2024, and we're wholeheartedly committed to the continued success of our district. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a safe holiday season and a very much needed break.
As for our HIBs, we have one confirmed at Seacaucus Middle School. We had two not founded at Seacaucus Middle School as well, and two not founded at Seacaucus High School.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings, and to affirm HIB 253515, SMS 10202023. I didn't finish. As reported by the superintendent and are available at administrative offices for review.
Second.
Call roll.
Yes.
Ms. Dadda?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Deombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Business Administrator report?
Yes. Tonight, under operations, we will be adding a resolution to the Agenda R 5.13, approval to authorize the business administrator to negotiate a shared service agreement with Bechtin Regional High School for a school bus for the remainder of the 23-24 school year. This bus is not presently needed for school transportation. Also, tonight, for myself, I'm sorry to say, but I'm happy for this person. I would like, the board tonight will be accepting the resignation of Ms. Phyllis Pesci. She is our Accounts Payable Specialist in central office. I would like to thank her for her dedication and many years to the district for her service. In addition, I wish her all the best. Enjoy, Ms. Pesci. Finally, I hope everyone enjoys the holiday break. Have a wonderful time. Enjoy your family and friends, and see you in 2024.
Anybody speaking on the public forum?
Really?
Yes.
All right, Governance Personnel?
Yes. We did a second reading of policies and regulations recommended by the superintendent. We discussed updating crowd control to one of the policies. Dr. Alfonso suggested that we have a yearly parent meeting to discuss expectations of parents at sporting events, and we discussed revising the school calendar, the in-service half-day change from May 24th to June 4th, so students are not in the building on Election Day. Okay. Okay. Do you want me to finish this, or you want her to go?
So why don't we...
Oh, I just finished. Okay. Okay. I'm just gonna finish my report. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R 1.01 through R 1.20, and Motion M 1.01, as described below, for the following.
So we're gonna, we're gonna hold the vote on that resolution?
Yes.
And allow, and allow the public to speak to the agenda items? This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discardes comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments, since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue, and I apologize for overlooking you on this agenda.
Kristen Beckhill?
Kristen Beckhill, 11/23, Stonewall Lane, Seacaucus, New Jersey, SCA President. I just wanted to speak on Resolution 1.03, the transfer of Margaret and Preveduto from the Early Learning Center, the high school. We'd just like to say that we, as the Seacaucus Education Association, understand that you are within your rights to transfer people based on student need, but we're requesting that if you're hiring a new school nurse, that she should be hired for the middle high school position, and that Margaret should be transferred back to the Early Learning Center. Based on our contract, the assignment dates are supposed to be given to us on May 31st. That's in our contract on page 17, and so we understand when there is an absolute need and nobody can fulfill that position, that we can be pulled at any point in time, but if you do hire somebody, we're requesting that she go back to her rightful position. Also, I requested from Grace, R 2.02, a few policies, and she doesn't have them right now, and I spoke to her in the back about that, but it's just on the new sick leave laws, the policy that you're enacting on the new sick leave laws that Governor Murphy instilled, the right of privacy and the attendance rights. We just want to take a look at that, make sure it doesn't conflict with our contract, because I've been informed that in some districts, the policy is often conflicting with our contract, and we just want to make sure that that doesn't. And for R 1.106, I'm not sure, I know that when we met, the job description for the non-tenured instructional professional nurse...
the Early Learning Center to the high school. We'd just like to say that we, as the Secaucus Education Association, understand that you are within your rights to transfer people based on student need. But we're requesting that if you're hiring a new school nurse, that she should be hired for the middle high school position, and that Margaret should be transferred back to the Early Learning Center. Based on our contract, the assignment dates are supposed to be given to us on May 31st. That's in our contract on page 17. And so we understand when there is an absolute need and nobody can fulfill that position, that we can be pulled at any point in time. But if you do hire somebody, we're requesting that she go back to her rightful position. Also, I requested from Grace, R 2.02, a few policies, and she doesn't have them right now, and I spoke to her in the back about that. But it's just on the new sick leave laws, the policy that you're enacting on the new sick leave laws that Governor Murphy instilled, the right of privacy and the attendance rights. We just wanna take a look at that, make sure it doesn't conflict with our contract, because I've been informed that in some districts, the policy is often conflicting with our contract, and we just wanna make sure that that doesn't. And for R 1.106, I'm not sure, I know that when we met, the job description for the non-tenured instructional professional nurse wasn't completed yet. I just wanted to ask if that is completed at this time? It's not yet? Okay. So, so you're not, are you voting tonight on that job description? Because it's on the agenda. Nobody's gonna?
We're gonna let you finish up, and then we'll respond to your questions.
Okay. Okay. And I'm actually requesting a copy of that job description. And we just want to report that the Hiring Committee met twice in good faith to try to work out some sort of resolution with the nursing situation, and I do believe we came up with three viable solutions to this. We understand that it is imperative that we get another nurse in, so we are looking forward to working with you, and hopefully we can come to an agreement together. And on behalf of the SCA, we just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
So as a point of order, we are now moving the agenda items now that there has been public discussion on those items. And, Mr. President, I'd like to suggest that R 1.06 be removed and that that job description be placed back on the agenda for the January meeting so that the job description can be made available to the public before we vote on it.
Motion?
Motion to table?
Sorry.
I need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. DeDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. DeOmbre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Policy?
I didn't, we didn't go through, yeah, we have to call the roll, but I need to re-say it, because now we're removing one. So I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 1.01 through R 1.05 and R 1.07 through R 1.20 and motion M 1.01 as described below for the following. Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. DeDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. DeOmbre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Policy?
Policy. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 2.01 through R 2.02 as described below.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Kristin mentioned looking at the, SCA wants to look at the policy. We can make that available to them? That was one of her questions. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. DeDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. DeOmbre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Education Committee, curriculum?
Okay, so field trips were the first item discussed, and the only notable changes are that instead of the eighth graders having one overnight trip, they will have three day trips. We reviewed the nursing services plan for each school. The signing physician reviewed with each nurse in the buildings. We have received excellent feedback regarding the big ideas and Amplify curriculums. We are looking to adopt the Amplify curriculum for third graders, and we discussed some of the discrepancies between the two different elementary school buildings. We will be addressing them in the future to prevent any differences between both buildings. There will be an information session on basic skills on December 18th and an information session on multi-language learning on December 20th. We are looking into providing American Sign Language professional development for staff for the next new, for staff, and then the next New Teacher Academy topic will be on strategies to support our special education students. Did I get that right? And that's it. And with that, I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 3.01 and R 3.02.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. DeDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. DeOmbre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Operations Committee, finance?
All right, a couple of the highlights of the meeting are we discussed, two RFPs will be going out for consultants to support the federal grant for fostering diverse schools. A.J. Tovia applied for some cybersecurity grants, and we're waiting on results for that. We approved the ice hockey co-op for the 2023, 2024 school year. And that's pretty much it. So that's it for finance. So I'd like to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt the resolutions R 5.01 through R 5.13.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. DeDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. DeOmbre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
On resolution R 5.01, approval of check register, I recuse myself on the payment to Reed Academy and vote yes on all other resolutions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Safety, security?
We don't have nothing to vote on, but I will give, I will give just a quick update on some of the things that we discussed around meeting. We discussed with Sal some of the updates for some projects around the district. One of them was he streamlined the work order process through school dude. He made a new process. It moves the work orders through the system, keeps an eye on them, and it gets them done faster, so there's no, there's no lagging work orders anymore. He also discussed the work schedule for the night custodians. Some of the project updates around the district are in Claritin School. The generator has still not arrived. We're pushing back that installation date to April current right now. In Huber Street, the fence in the back of the school has been completed, and we've also included some slats in the fence for privacy. The Secaucus people who live there are very happy about that. Middle School, High School, the scoreboard is here, but it has not been put up yet. We're hoping to have this done by the end of the year. We also received some light poles that we're gonna put in the parking lot area around the football field. It'll, it'll increase the lighting and safety for all the people and fans that come to the stadium. And finally, and district-wide, the camera project is about 90% done. Just some labeling that's gotta be done to certain cameras. Other than that, it's, the project is almost finished.
A-hocs, shared services, do we have anything? No? Legislation, no? Athletics, no? Communications, circ? That's it?
Mr. President, can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
When I congratulated Ms. Pesci, I said on her resignation. I meant to say retirement. That's a big difference.
Oh, yeah?
So on her retirement, I congratulate her.
At least you're not happy she resigned.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody on the public forum? No? Board member comments?
I'd like to wish a happy belated birthday to Alex.
For the sixth time.
Happy birthday, Alex. I second it. Yes.
Anybody else?
We can see again.
Well, I'll say on behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season, and enjoy the break, and see you in 2024.
And you're here. Happy birthday, Alex.
And happy birthday, Alex.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.